Counsel, July 25th. We appreciate everyone that is here in attendance and those that are linking in via the Internet. We will now have an opening by Councilman Carl Ward.
And I'd like to give my opening in the form of a prayer. Our Heavenly Father, we come to Thee as we begin this council meeting for the Cache County Council. We express our gratitude to be able to live in such favorable circumstances. We're thankful for the good people for whom we associate and work, and grateful for the good people for whom we serve. We ask Thee to bless us with Thy Spirit this evening, that we'll be guided and directed in the decisions that we make. We will be able to see clearly the things that need to be done and, again, make decisions that will benefit, a long-term benefit of all businesses in Cache County. Pray for Thy Spirit to be with us now in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Will you join me in my pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'd like to excuse Councilmember Catherine Buse tonight. And we'll go, how about reading, a review and approval of the agenda?
I'm moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. We approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. How about the minutes from July 11th?
Move approval of the minutes.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, that we approve the minutes from July 11th. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. About five minutes. County Executive, would you have any information on your report?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick items. I had a meeting today with the Cache Valley Transit District with our representative on that board as well as their general manager. And state code has changed in relation to their board makeup. And so they're trying to figure out some suggestions on how they change the structure of their board. And they're planning to come and give a presentation to the council. I gave them Mica's name and number, so they may be reaching out to you to, if you've got a time, they can come give a report to the council about some of those legislative changes that affect their board. Essentially, it changed their board. Right now, their board's 19, and it's going to drop it down to, I think it was eight, board members. So that'll be great. I had an opportunity to do not a ride-along, but a sit-along with Dispatch, our dispatch center across the street. And I just wanted to mention what incredible professionalism they have and what a difficult job they have. They do a fantastic, fantastic job of coordinating so many, so many things at the same time, multitasking and handling some pretty high-stakes situations. And just want to publicly thank them for what they do. And if, if any of you are interested in doing a ride-along, sit-along with them, I'm sure they'd love to have you. It'll blow your mind what they're doing over there and how professionally they do it. We had, we had a Bear River Mental Health Board meeting, and we are looking at some locations for the receiving center. Potentially going to be purchasing a parcel of land soon, depending on how things go, to be able to start the construction of the receiving center. The state finally finalized the process for us to apply for those funds, which we did. Submitted all that paperwork to the state for the receiving center from Bear River Mental Health. So that project is moving forward. Just wanted to give you that brief update. We also had a Bear River Health Department meeting last week. That board will be sending a recommendation for filling the vacancy that's currently on that board. So that should be coming to the council at some point in the next couple of months. It's kind of a long process, and that board doesn't meet as often as it used to. So also, I had a really good meeting with Mayor Danes last week. And then Councilmember Goodlander went along with me. We went and visited their council and just said hello and checked in with them. Mayor Danes and I talked about, she gave me an update on the library project. Unfortunately, they've had some delays, most recently with the HVAC system. She gave you an update, an update on the Plaza, and you all should have gotten an email from her about the ribbon-cutting grand opening for the Plaza project. If you don't have that, let me know. I can forward the invitation to you because we're invited to that. The county was one of the sponsors of that project. And then she gave me also an update on the 1400 North redevelopment project around the mall. And she told me that she was hoping to speak with all of you about that project and give you all an update. If you haven't had a chance to speak with her about that, she would love to talk to you about that project, if you could reach out to her. We spoke a little bit about the landfill reclamation project. They are, the city is planning to reclaim that once it's finally closed out and turn it into recreation space, park space, which will be a great project. We also did speak a little bit about recreation in general, and she has a desire to do something new. They are going to be moving out of the high school, the Logan High School Recreation Center space. And she'd love to have conversations with us about potential partnerships on that. If any of you'd like more information, please talk to me later. Love to talk to you about that. And then just wanted to mention that the fair is coming up and look forward to that. Hope everybody's looking forward to that. It's going to be fun, and it'll be here before we know it. But if you'd like to be involved with the fair, we'd love to have you. And please reach out to our committee members. There are lots of things you can help with. And that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
6A, request for new position of a special investigator.
Good afternoon.
Appreciate it, Dane.
So I know the council, because there's a previous ARPA project that was awarded for the equipment involved with the second special investigator for office. Just going back to the need for this, if you remember the presentation I gave as a department update in January, our special victims unit went from a three-year caseload in 2014 to 16, 394 cases, to 638 for the next three-year span, to 1,031 for the three-year span ending in May of 2022. During that timeframe, we've been able to, thanks to council, add two more special victim units prosecutors. So now we have three working full-time with several others helping on cases. But in that time, we've remained with one investigator. So this year, as part of our VAWA grant, we requested a second investigator be funded. And we got news that we did receive funding that would cover approximately 50% of salary for that investigator. For 2023, we wouldn't need any additional funding from the council to hire that investigator. We have enough money in our budget, but we would need the position approved. And that would be something that I'd be asking for in my 2024 budget. I can't speak enough to what having an investigator in our office has done. When I first started with the county, we had part-time investigators who were not sworn law enforcement. Shortly after, we were able to move to a sworn investigator who was able to basically act as a force multiplier for all of the law enforcement agency's investigation divisions. So we can take some work off their detectives working on these really serious cases so they can focus on the cases that they're currently working, not the cases that have been sent to our office that need additional follow-up. You all know Lieutenant Argyle, who does an awesome job for our office. This would take some, some pressure off him to allow him to focus on some of the other things that we're having him do and not worry so much about his, he's on salary. So we ask a lot of him to work extra hours and be here during trials. This would, this would definitely be a benefit to him as well as all of our attorneys. I think it'd be a benefit to everyone in the county because everyone's impacted some way or another by these type of cases. The new investigator position would be almost exclusively assigned to special victims cases, allowing Lieutenant Argyle to assist attorneys on cases that involve, about a quarter of his, his salary would be paid out by the grant for special victims, leaving the remaining two-thirds of his time to focus on other investigation as needed. Honestly, that will still probably be taken up by special victims. It just won't be required by the grant to necessarily be focused all on special victims as it is currently. Are there any questions from the council?
Have a question. The 50% grant of the salary, is that just for one year or is that something that can still be applied in this year? Or how does that go?
It's for the next grant cycle. So that would be until, it'd be 2023 to 2024, 2024 to 2025. And then it could be reapplied for, we've been, been lucky to, for the most part, keep our grant, our VAWA funding for sure. We haven't lost VAWA funding for our investigator or prosecutors in my memory. And unfortunately, Terrell's in the Galapagos Islands diving, so she would be able to speak to that more. But it's my understanding that that hasn't been an issue for us going back almost, I think, 20-something years that we've been receiving VAWA funding, that Terrell's been managing that.
Super. That helps.
Appreciate it. Other questions? We'll see it then come forward, so. Thank you. Alma, would you go ahead and share us the Budget Committee's plan?
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to come back and present when you've had a little more time to, to review. So the, this is the proposal from the Budget Committee. It is the suggestions for the process of outside entities being able to apply for ARPA funds. The Budget Committee suggested a buffer amount that's specified there. And we just wanted to make sure that you understand that the funds need to be obligated by December of 31st of 2024. And so the Budget Committee proposed that during that first quarter of next year, 2024, that you look at everything, the big picture, and make sure that, that everything has the opportunity to be obligated. The Budget Committee suggests that a round be open to the county departments and component units with an amount there specified for those. That application process could open up as early as tomorrow if approved. That would be the opening of the application. The deadline would be August 11th. Then it would be reviewed in August and be presented to the Budget Committee on August 28th, their next meeting. And then that it would be presented to the council or could be presented to the council on September 12th. Then a, a process of opening up for nonprofit organizations would be in September. If, if all of this is approved, and then the applications would be due September 29th. Then the finance department staff would review that in October. And then it would be presented to a Budget Committee meeting sometime in October, and then presented to the council in November on the 14th. Any questions about that as it's come?
As it relates to nonprofits, are there restrictions as to what those ARPA funds can be used for? For nonprofits to, if they apply, what are the restrictions for the use of those funds?
There, there is a lot of things that they could apply for. So this is out of a, this is from the overview of the final rule, which we receive our guidance. Impacted nonprofits, there are a lot of things that they could ask for. Decreased revenue, financial insecurity, increased costs, capacity to, whether the financial hardship challenges. They can, and that can be in the form of loans or grants to them. So it's fairly broad as to what the, the funds could be used for.
But what they would have to show is that they, this would help to mitigate negative impacts from COVID. They couldn't just use the funds to, say, expand their operations or something like that.
Yeah, it would have, they would have to show financial hardship or insecurity.
Alma, will you just briefly explain to the two, the two different pathways that that money can be given to nonprofits? And that, that one pathway has reporting requirements that are pretty onerous, and one pathway does not. Can we, can we specify that in, in this ordinance?
Right. The one process, if they're going to work on a project or something like that, there would be some reporting requirements if they were to receive a loan based on, on, or not a loan, but a loan or a grant based on financial insecurities or something tied to the effects of the pandemic. Then it would just be, you could give that money to them, and then, then it would be done.
There's no legal obligation for the county or circumstance where we would have to pay it back? Or, because I think that was a, that was a worry at one point, but I think, I think we need to clarify that, that there is a path to give money to nonprofits that does not require that kind of reporting afterwards.
Right, if it's tied to the financial hardships, yeah.
So that, I'm sorry. So that means that they, if, if they can prove that they suffered a financial hardship during the pandemic, then they don't have to, we don't have to keep a reporting from them. Is that, am I correct?
No. No, it would just, we would just report that X amount of money was paid to nonprofits.
Okay.
Alma, how would we have them justify that? Do we have to see their financials from the year before the pandemic and during? Does it have to be proven in that way?
Yeah, it would, it would be similar to what took place with CARES. And I wasn't here, but I've talked to Phil about that. And he said that they, they looked at the financials, I think they looked at financials from 2018 and 2019. And then they showed like 20, whenever they applied, their financials from 2020 showing that there was a hardship. And that's how the CARES was distributed to entities.
Does it have to be quantified somehow? Does it have to be like they lost 50% of their revenue? Or can it just be that the revenue went down 1%?
It, it, it really doesn't specify. I'd have to get into the revenue loss and look at that. But I don't remember how much amount there, that they need to have in order to qualify.
Okay, thanks.
Just had one other question too, that I was thinking about it today. Since we received the money, it's been more than a couple of years ago. Has there been interest generated on that, on that money that we received? And has that been accounted for in the money that we're going to distribute? Like what, was there interest received and how is that accounted for?
I think there is some interest being, but that money, that would not, as far as I understand, I would have to clarify with Phil, but I don't believe that would have any ARPA qualifications if you receive interest on, on any money.
Just goes back into the general fund?
Mm-hmm. That's my understanding.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Other questions?
Are you also going to be talking about the alternate? In our packet?
I am not.
I can discuss that as well.
Yeah, please do. I have whatever you need to do.
Seen it. Yeah.
So just in talking with some of you about this plan, and I've been working with Alma to discuss the alternate plan because I knew there was some concerns amongst some of you on the council regarding the opening up all of the funds to county departments first and then only going to nonprofits in the event that there is money left over after, after we have reviewed and the council has approved the county department application. So you should have an alternate plan that would, and, and these numbers are just from discussions I've had with you. Obviously, it's up to the council, to you as a body, to decide what these numbers may or may not be. But under this plan, the, there would be an opening to, for ARPA funds to county departments that would, all the dates would be identical to the original plan. That is, the, the, sorry, the application would open tomorrow, and the deadline would be August 3rd and, sorry, August 11th and so on. But there would only be seven, there would be a cap on 750,000 for county departments. And then there would be a separate application for nonprofits. There would be 515,000 available to nonprofits. And under that plan, the application would, the application would open one week from tomorrow, on August 2nd. The deadline would be August 18th, and then it would go to the Budget Committee. Well, sorry, it would go to finance and the Budget Committee, just like it would with the county departments. And so we would, the, the council, under this plan, would be setting aside money specifically for nonprofits and money for, for the county departments. So again, those, those amounts and those dates are, are up to you as a council. This is just kind of something to get the ball rolling. So that, that first plan Alma presented on, that would be the Budget Committee's recommendation. This would be just an alternate that, that I've put together at the request of some of you after hearing some of your concerns. So, yeah. Answer any questions as well.
Any questions from Mica?
So I just want to clarify that on the, the very last line of the nonprofit section, it says, "The awards to nonprofits shall be solely to recoup lost revenue."
Thank you for, yeah.
So that would put it in that lane that does not have to be overseen by the county afterwards, correct?
That's right. Sorry, I failed to, to point that out. So under this alternate plan, that's, that second, that, that additional opening just for nonprofits, the application would be very clear that what is being looked for is evidence of, of revenue loss during the COVID-19 pandemic. And so it would be up to the nonprofits to, to demonstrate that revenue loss, and that's what.
It's not available for projects and things that.
Right. It would not be project-based.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
So I did, I just.
Yeah, go, Mark.
Question. To me materially, the difference between these plans is simply that we are stating that there will be a dedicated half a million dollars for nonprofits.
Half a million or whatever other value.
That means then we would be excluding that half a million from consideration for departments within the county.
Yeah, for, for this round of applications, yeah.
Any other questions?
So, yeah, just to make sure I'm clear. So for the departments, 750,000, was that right, Mica?
Yes, yes.
And then a little over 500,000 for nonprofits.
That's correct.
Okay.
515.
515.
515. Yeah, thank you.
Would I just add one additional piece of information to clarify? If you look at, I believe it's on both proposals, the part where it says, "Open another round to county departments and component units." What was discussed in the Budget Committee was that component units would include things like Bear River Health Department because they're essentially our health department, even though they're a separate inter-local agency. If you remember, they, they were here when we had this last discussion and asked about being able to apply and potentially having some projects that might qualify. And so that's what the, that's what the Budget Committee discussed and felt was appropriate. And so I just wanted to clarify and make sure everyone understood that that's what that means.
Any other questions, comments?
And that would be included in the 750,000, what they applied for?
Yes.
Got it. Okay.
Do you want to open it up for discussion?
It is opened up for discussion right now.
Can I just say, my, my personal opinion is that when you read the federal stipulations on the, the ARPA funds, nonprofits are listed quite prominently. That was supposed to be part of what was done. And so my, my vote would be for this alternate plan. I think that's fair. And I know that a lot of the county departments have already done at least one round. And I don't know if anyone knows how many rounds that they have put in their needs for the ARPA funds. And so I, I feel like this is fair, and I would, would like to put my support behind that plan.
Other discussion?
I tend to agree with Councilwoman Goodlander. I mean, there's no doubt about it. The money is needed everywhere. But I'm under the opinion that the nonprofits help us in the county in many ways also, so. And I'm under the opinion that county departments need it as well. So it's a tough one, but as you go around it, divvying up to some and all may be good as we review that, so.
I, I just want to let Mica know, I appreciate, he really worked hard on that this, this morning and worked with Alma to look at some of these things. And I'm in favor of this other proposal that we have. And thank you for both of your work, for all that you've done on this because it makes me feel a lot better about doing what we want to do or need to do for our nonprofits and our departments both. So, thank you.
Other comments?
I just have a question. So if that's what the direction is in relation to nonprofits, is the council saying, assuming you approve that alternative proposal, are you saying that you would not be interested in any other proposals from nonprofits? Only that particular category of request?
Based on the lost revenues, is that what you're clarifying?
Yeah, the lost revenue.
That makes it more simplified.
We did that so that we didn't burden the county finance department with following those funds and requiring it because in the Budget Committee, that was discussed as that would be a hard task. And we have since found out that under this, they make the application, prove that there's been a loss. There's not any contingency finance following or anything else. So that seems to make sense, that we're not tasking the county to follow that and trace that, which was a concern before.
Right.
If we're throwing our opinions out there before we actually ask for a vote, I'll just add mine. I think the work that the Budget Committee did was well-rounded and well-informed. We had a great group of informed and enlightened people there, as well as department heads. And there was a lot of understanding about the needs within the county, the realities that everything costs more now than it did a year ago when a lot of the awards were already made. And so there is a real likelihood that we will need funding for county departments. And I'm in favor of having all the options available. And the part I don't like about the alternative is that it hamstrings us on limiting what we could spend within our own departments.
I, I don't know as if we were that informed in the Budget Committee about this because I asked Mica myself, "Mica, is there anything that we could look at?" I'm not clear on how, you know, especially with nonprofits, what the stipulations were on that. And since he, since we've had a chance to look at that, I'm feeling much better about that. And I feel more informed about the requirements of the ARPA. And also, I feel comfortable if we go the direction we're headed with them, with the nonprofits proving that there was a financial hardship and it doesn't bind the county for a lot of extra, you know, police work on it.
Oversight.
Yeah, oversight on it. I'm in favor of the proposal. And I agree that the nonprofits provide, with Nolan, that the nonprofits provide a lot of service to the county, and we should be concerned about them.
So, yeah, I, we're, we're having a friendly discussion, so please don't take this as an argument directed to you, Barbara, or anyone specific. But the, not having a full understanding of the ARPA requirements, I agree with you totally on that. That was absent, but that wasn't the only reason for the rest of the entirety of the discussion that the Budget Committee had. That was one element of a concern with releasing the money externally, not the only concern.
Yeah, it's true.
We'll also have that buffer of 435,000 that would not be open to nonprofits. That would both be to supplement the county needs.
Understood.
I feel like that's a good, I like that.
At the end of the day, the only difference is we're limiting how much we would award internally.
Up this money. We've awarded some before, so.
You're only talking about this money.
Your points are very well-taken, and I've thought it over because, I mean, we're here for the county, and we're here to help the departments. And there's only so much money, so we all have to deal with that, and so you've got good points. But we'll have to sit and see which way we go.
I appreciate the, the word. I appreciate the, the work by the council to try to make this simpler for our staff to manage. I, I think this approach would make it much simpler for our staff because of the tracking and reporting requirements. I, I would be concerned if that meant that there would be some kind of a good cause that we could otherwise help with, with the nonprofit because it doesn't fit into this narrower, more simplified category. So I, I just want to say on behalf of the executive branch, the staff, the people who would have to handle it, Alma, I'm speaking on behalf of Alma, I guess, we're willing to take on that additional work if there's a good cause that really needs to, to be taken care of or an organization that really needs this help. So I, I would hate to have you limit the availability so much that we then don't help some people who need help simply to make our job easier. I, I think we're here to, to serve the people even if sometimes it's difficult and we're willing to do that. So I appreciate your efforts to make our job easier, but we're willing to do the more difficult job if you ask us to.
Okay, we were needing to do a public hearing. You guys want to digest that and we can bring that back up in discussion later? Or do you want to move on it?
I would say let's do the public hearings.
Okay. We'll go ahead and move on. We'll probably bring that up here shortly. So eight A and eight B, I would entertain motions to set those two public hearings.
I move that we set the public hearing for August 8th, 2023, for ordinance 2023-27, Esperance Estates Rezone. Hope I said that right. And number B, set public hearing for August 8th, 2023, ordinance 2023-28, Graham addition rezone.
I'll second it.
Moving seconded, that we set those public hearings as stated, ordinance 2023-27, 2023-28 respectively, and that would be for August 8th. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous? Okay, public hearing, ordinance 2023-25, who is going to, on amending the standards associated with accessory apartments to comply with recent changes in state code? Who's got that?
Say, do you want me to present on that first?
Yeah, no, I think that would be appropriate if you'd share with what, a little information there, then we'll open up the public hearing here in just a second after we get a little information again.
Okay. And so I'll just give a quick update. Tim gave a wonderful presentation at the last meeting that was pretty informative. I've added a little bit to that based on some discussion that we've had internally after the Planning Commission's recommendation. And so the first couple of slides Tim went through at the last time, so I'll just hit the highlights of those and then we'll get to a couple of things that I've added. So the first one is, just as a reminder, our annual report for our moderate income housing plan deadline has, was changed this last legislative session. So now we have to report on August 1st, which, which updating our ADU ordinance was part of that map, part of that master plan. And so if you see here, under one of the criteria that we selected was to bring our code into compliance, which is one reason why this ADU code update is in front of you today. And so we'll get down, so just a couple of quick notes. We, most of you are pretty familiar with ADUs and what they're doing and what the code is. But one thing I wanted to touch on before the vote happened was just kind of the history. ADUs have been a very, really common use throughout the history of the United States and most of human civilization. Mostly they've been known as guest houses, carriage houses, servant quarters, casitas, et cetera. And early settlers in Utah would often use them to build farmhouses for, or houses for farmhands to help out on, within their property. ADUs really began to lose a lot of popularity as strict single-family zoning started to take place really in the 40s and 50s. However, as many of you know, they are kind of entering into a resurgence. The state requires that we allow internal ADUs within the county, within our residential zoning. And really, I think there's a lot of things that are good about them. ADUs have a lot of positive aspects to them. They, they are an easy way for governments to expand housing options for, within their communities. And they're very efficient at doing that. I mean, if you're to think, if you wanted to build a dozen apartments within here, within the county, or a couple dozen apartments, if you were to build one apartment building, that would have a much higher impact than spreading that out through 24 different ADUs throughout the different counts, throughout the county. And one of the, one of the big advantages to this is the benefit it has for individual property owners. It provides second source of income to property owners and it allows them to directly manage it. But one study actually showed that, within a study area, that 50% of the ADUs were rented out by close friends or family. So these are oftentimes used as housing options for people who need help, or people within families who are looking to, for either additional support or for a housing option that, or another type of housing option. And one of the benefits to that is that they can, families can provide this support to their families or friends and also have minimal impact. And so there are, one of the big questions that we're going to be talking about today is, we're going to be talking about three different types of ADUs. There's going to be internal ADUs, attached ADUs, and detached ADUs. And so this is a graphic that the AARP put together to kind of highlight the different uses. And so you have detached, so this is a structure that is completely separate from a primary, the primary building or the primary home. You have attached, which is the second option listed there. And that's really an ADU that is not contained within the primary dwelling's footprint. So think of it like a wing of a house or an expansion onto a home. And then you have interior, and those are done in a couple of different ways. Those are done through, you know, as you can see in the next couple of examples, either through basements, sometimes they're the second story, some, and one of the recent changes in state code is state code clarified that ADU attached to a garage that is attached to the primary dwelling by a common wall is considered an interior ADU. And by state code, we are required to allow for internal ADUs. We are not required to allow for detached or attached. And so I think that's important to keep in mind as we discuss the proposed ordinance. And so we had a lot of debate and discussion about these new changes, what internal IADUs means and versus like an attached or detached. And so we feel like the code that we were proposing is trying to, and the Planning Commission proposed, is trying to strike a good balance in those type of requirements. I also want, but I want to talk about detached ADUs for a minute. Many of you saw, I sent out an email and also Chief Hammer sent out an email last week about detached ADUs. So the Planning Commission made a recommendation to allow for detached ADUs to be, be permitted within the A10 zone. Staff helped the Planning Commission draft some criteria that would help mitigate that impact. And the Planning Commission felt like this overall helped enhance individual property or property rights, provided more housing and allowed it greater flex of greater use of an individual's property. However, this was, this recommendation from the Planning Commission was, was done despite staff's recommendation to delay allowing for detached ADUs at the, at this time. Some of the concerns, as was raised by Chief Hammer, and I think he had, he wanted to talk to this a little bit, about access and identification in case of emergency. For instance, if a, if you have an accessory building that's on fire and it's not clear if somebody lives there, one of the greatest threats to firefighters is to go into burning buildings to look for people. And so without clear identification and clear ability to access that structure, that poses some risks not only to individuals, but also to the, to our fire department and those who work there. There's also some questions that remain about water rights and septic tanks. We've been told different, we've been told a couple of different things about whether or not you'd need additional water rights to, for a detached ADU. And there's some question about septic tanks, about how that would be provided. And so it's also important to note, we do not, we don't need detached ADUs to comply with state code. So my, the planning staff's recommendation at this time is to delay approval of detached. And so don't, don't include them in the today's ordinance until we have a chance to work through some of these concerns, if there's a way that we can provide proper mitigation. We did propose some mitigations to the Planning Commission, which were approved. However, after further discussions with Fire and Public Works, they found that those mitigations were not adequate to meet their concerns. And so at this time, that would be our recommendation moving forward detached. However, if, as we've talked to staff, if that's the way that the County Council would like to approve detached, we can find ways to make it work. I do think there are some benefits to it, as the Planning Commission saw. But like I said, there are a few questions that I prefer to have answered before we move forward with them. Other than that, there's just a few good other resources out there for ADUs if you have any additional questions. And then we can get into the ordinance a little bit and kind of walk through the proposal. So currently, the proposal that's before you today is the proposal with, with detached ADUs as allowed. That was a recommendation from the Planning Commission. And if there's any questions as I go through this, please feel free to stop me at any time. So the first thing that we wanted to do is to bring our code into compliance with state code. Their state, like a few years ago, required that municipalities and counties allow for internal ADUs within all their residential zoning. And so as we talked about, that'd be anything that was contained within the footprint of the primary dwelling. So typically, yeah.
And what was the carrot that they do that? Was it just mandated or in order to receive certain what?
So there's, there's two. There is a stick, we're just required by code. So this is, is not an option. We essentially have to allow for internal ADUs by state code. And then they also offered an incentive, so we're all required to, to have a moderate income housing plan. And as part of that plan, we had to adopt three of their 25 strategies that are approved by the state. And as part of one of those strategies is to allow for ADUs. So essentially, they're saying you have to require them, but we're going to allow you to count that as part of your moderate income housing requirements anyways, or also. And so if you adopt a certain number of strategies, then it opens you up for, you'll receive Class C funds for roadways, which is also another stick. But if you start incorporating other items into your moderate income housing plan, then it opens up for grant funding that otherwise wouldn't be available. And so it's mostly stick in this case from the state. It's a thou shalt. But I think there's some, as we talked about, I think there's some benefits to ADUs within, or allowing ADUs within the county as well. So one of the big changes though, that took place this last legislative session, is they changed the definition of an internal ADU, which was incorporated into our definitions. As you can see in the pink there, so internal ADU must be within the footprint of the primary dwelling, e.g. a basement attic. At the time, the internal accessory dwelling unit is created, primary dwelling shall include a garage if the garage is connected to the primary dwelling by a common wall. So that quote in the pink, that's directly out of state code. And that was new this legislative session. And so that was a change that we have to come into compliance with. And so I'm going to hop back a little bit. And so with also, with some of the other changes in state code, there are some things that we can govern and some things that we can't. And so this use limitations are a lot of the things that we can govern. And so we can govern some zoning, so we only need to allow them in residential-based zoning. And after talking with the county attorney's office, we've determined that would include A10, RU2, and RU5 zones. One thing that we can restrict is not for our short-term rentals. We don't have to allow for short-term rentals within ADUs. The Planning Commission opted to remove that restriction in their recommendation. However, if the County Council would like to move forward with that option removed, that's fine. But my personal opinion is, I feel like there's other nuances of short-term rentals that I would, my recommendation would be that we'd add that back in to the ordinance. One of the other things that we can require is that it be owner occupied. And so our, our recommendation is that the primary single-family dwelling unit or the ADU must remain owner occupied. There are some exceptions for bona fide temporary absences. So essentially, if you do military service, if you serve a mission or go on some sort of sabbatical, that you can still rent out that ADU or the primary dwelling. We prohibit mobile homes and recreation vehicles in this proposed ordinance. And neither the dwelling, or neither the primary dwelling nor the ADU may be sold or conveyed separately. So essentially, they have to remain, you can't piecemeal them out. You can't condominiumize the home or subdivide the property.
Question?
Yes.
Can they use those ADUs for like VRBOs or anything like that?
So that's the short-term rental provision. So according to state law, anything is, a short-term rental is a stay for 30 days or less.
Okay.
And so once you're doing more than 30 days, then you have a long-term rental. So if you have a contract by month by month or allow for rentals for longer than the 30-day period, that's long-term. And we can't restrict that in internal ADUs, but we can restrict it for them posting it on Airbnb or VRBO or one of the other ones.
Your recommendation was to restrict them.
Yeah.
Correct, at this point. I think there is some benefit to do that and, but however, there are certain, there's, if we're going to open up, we don't have any short-term rental restrictions currently in our code. And they can become a nuisance and an issue if not managed well or have proper ordinances in place. And so that'd be my recommendation at this time. However, like I said, the Planning Commission felt like removing that overall benefited property owners because essentially you can rent out your ADU for a lot more on a short-term basis than you can on a long-term basis if you market it right and do it correctly. And so not only, so it's a economic benefit to the individual property owner because it's higher revenue. And also the county receives taxes off of that, which we don't receive taxes just off a rental.
But it doesn't really meet the requirement of affordable housing.
Correct. And that's one of the concerns that I have with them is that it takes away, if you allow for ADUs for affordability, allowing for short-term rentals takes away some of that affordable options. And there's been a lot of studies that show that and back that up, is you increase in short-term rental within an area, that rental, rent prices tend to go up as well and same with property values. And so.
I have a question too. Did the Planning Commission come up with any recommendations for like a permitting process or a yearly recertification so that like, you know, you, somebody gets a certified ADU, but then they decide to sell the house and two people, they're going to, you know what I mean? The rules aren't followed after that. Once it's set up, nobody checks. Like, is there any, any vehicle set up to kind of check that?
So currently, no, but you, there are some options that we can do. The state code allows us to record a restriction on the property with our ADU standards, so the property has to follow that. You can also require business licensing if you would like to for an ADU. And so if somebody rents it out, they can be required to get a business license for that.
Okay.
Let's see. So let's drop down to the ADU types. So we talked about internal. And state code is very restrictive in what we can restrict with internal ADUs. Essentially, we can't restrict that there's shared, a shared connection between the two. We can't restrict the size of it. And so there's a bunch of stuff that we can't restrict. And so what we tried to do is just create a code that meant the criteria within the state. However, once we moved down to attached, we talked about, so attached, as a reminder, is a unit that is attached to the primary dwelling but not incorporated within the main footprint. And so if there's no, if the primary dwelling doesn't have anything above or below it, we would consider that as an attached unit. And with attached, we have a lot more ability, and same with detached, a lot more ability to govern size, access, those type of items. So what the proposal is, an ADU appendage to an existing or proposed single-family dwelling that extends beyond the footprint, an attached ADU living area shall contain no, contain two or fewer bedrooms with a total area that is less than 50% of the total square footage of the primary residence, but no more than 12,000 square feet. And the ADU shall contain an internal connection between common living areas of the accessory apartment. of the accessory apartment and the single family dwelling that meets the requirements of this definition. So essentially, yeah.
So I'm having a hard time of deciphering between if I have a house and I decide to expand my house, so I dig a basement, add on to it, and now it's a rental versus an ADU, right? So, it seems like the ADU does not have a basement. Or tell me how we watch that difference. I guess we don't have to. But if I'm saying, well, an ADU is limited in size, I can add 5,000 square feet on to my house and I have a bigger internal apartment.
Yeah, so that is, that can be, that can be an issue. And we're actually reviewing a couple of proposals that are essentially trying to do that right now. How we have determined is if, so if you're adding an expansion on to your home and part of that expansion is an ADU, or maybe the whole thing is an ADU, what we've done is if it meets the criteria of being within the footprint of the primary dwelling, so essentially, let's say you expand out, but then you build a basement and add an apartment into that basement. If that basement is underneath, underneath primary dwelling area, then we'd consider that an internal ADU. But if it is not above or below part of the primary dwelling, then we consider that attached.
So on the attached, there's a size limit. On the expansion of a house, if I say I'm going to expand, but it's potentially going to be renting out, then we're not limiting that. So.
Correct.
That becomes a fine line to differentiate.
Yeah, and I think that's, as we move forward with our ADU enforcement, that's going to be one of the more complicated nuances for us to look. Because we have a couple hybrids of that as well, where we have people who are building sections of home that are partly, they have ADU that's partly within the footprint of the primary dwelling, but parts of it that aren't. And so, we've kind of, we've, I feel like we haven't had any that we haven't been able to resolve by our current code. I think this new definition, this new standards will help a little bit on that, but it is a little bit complicated.
So going that path, do we have a definition of what consists of a residence? I mean, so a family. So, we get a family or something going on and all of a sudden they expand at 5,000 square feet and we have 30 people living there.
Yes.
What have we got to watch or go there? Do you see my, this could evolve out pretty big.
Yeah, and that's one of the issues that we currently have had with our attached. Because we haven't, in the past, we haven't had great standards for size limitations and those type of things. Like we've had essentially people build duplexes onto their property. Or we have one example, I believe it's out in the Wellsville area, but Tim might be able to correct, correct me on that. But they've essentially had a home and then it has built another home right on to it and just connected it with a little hallway. And so, the idea of trying to limit the size is to prevent those type of expansions on the home. So that way, it really is a secondary dwelling compared to the primary dwelling's purpose. And so, you don't, essentially, we just, we're trying to prevent two primary dwellings to be built on one piece of property.
I still didn't get an answer as to what consists of a family.
Yeah, sorry, let me pull up the definition.
I'm just wondering, I mean, how you control that or what we're, what we're opening that to be.
Yeah, so under our code, a single-family dwelling is a structure that contains one dwelling unit. The following requirements also apply. Only one dwelling unit is allowed per legal lot. The structure must be a manufactured home, mobile home, or a permanent structure. With the approval of the land use authority, may allow more than one kitchen if it does not result in creation of second dwelling. And the uses, uses considers, that doesn't really apply to your question. But then, we also have, let me see. So, family is defined within our code as one individual or two, or two or more persons related by blood, marriage, or adoption, living together in a single-family dwelling unit and maintaining a common household, or no more than four non-related persons living together. The term family shall not be construed to mean a group of non-related individuals or fraternity club or institutional group.
Well, I guess two person, because I'm thinking of a spot, spot in Idaho. A family unit is pretty broad, but we've limited to here to two married or whatever else and related, right?
Yeah, so one individual, two or more persons who are related, or no more than four non-related persons living together. And some of that is also governed by state law with what we can restrict.
Yeah, I understand that. Okay.
Sorry, does that answer your question? I'm not.
We're getting there.
Well, I think the answer to part of Nolan's question might be in the second kitchen requirement.
Yes.
If the remodel that you're talking about adding on, if it includes a kitchen, then clearly, it's a secondary dwelling. And so, then it shouldn't.
Yes.
Yeah, but many homes, many homes have a kitchenette already in them.
Right.
I'm agreeing with you, Nolan.
Yeah, so one thing that.
We need to tighten that enforcement in order to make this work.
Yep, so one thing that we currently do when they bring in a zoning clearance or building permit, if they show a second kitchen, we ensure that if it's in an attached unit, we ensure that it would, could, that it would comply with the standards of an attached ADU. There's a lot of people who build multiple kitchens in their homes. Because a lot of times, you'll have like a game room or theater room in the basement and you include a range and microwave and refrigerator. So that way, you don't have to go to the other section of the house to do whatever you're, whatever you're doing down there.
It's the definition of a kitchen versus a full-service kitchen. Partially, that's where we can have some ability to manage this stuff.
Because I can adopt a lot of people.
Yes.
Too.
I'm sure they'd be happy too.
Yeah. Ask my wife, I'm an honorary son of a gun, so.
About six wives.
Exactly.
So the last.
I have a clarification on this. On 11/20, it says accessory apartment. And I don't know if this is a typographical error or what, but it says T more or fewer rooms.
That's on both of them.
Yeah, it's on both of them. So, what, is that two, three?
All right, which subsection is that?
That's two on 11/20. And it's talking about accessory apartment.
On the strikeout, it says two more or fewer. But on the new thing that we've got, it just has T more.
I wonder if that's just a typo.
I figured it probably was, but I think we need to make that clarif, you know, clarification.
Two, three, or 30.
Yeah, really.
Or 300.
Yeah.
Is that under the?
So talking about internal, attached, or detached ADUs.
It's on this section.
Number 17.02.
I think it's in both of them.
Yeah, it's in both places.
11/20.
Let's see.
Yeah. I noticed it when I read through the first time, but now I'm looking at the new, the new one that we were given. I don't know if it's still there.
If you pull up 10B-1, it's on page two, accessory department, T more or fewer rooms.
Okay.
See it there? It's in, it's in our packet that's right here, so.
Yeah, I know we had a couple of issues with the PDF upload. Yeah, contain two or fewer bedrooms. I think that was the purpose for attached and for detached, was to have two or fewer. Of course, that's, I don't think that typo's in my, the one that I'm currently looking at.
10B-1, go to page two, 11/20, T more. Unless I'm not updated.
I'm looking at accessory apartment, T more or fewer. You got it?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, it's, it's. This is, this is. Planning commission recommendation. It's right here. It's supposed to say two.
Yeah. Okay, sorry. So we're talking about this typo right here. And so, for, I think that, that section is supposed to be removed because of the state requirement. We can no longer, for internal ADUs, we can no longer govern their size or how many bedrooms. And so, what we did was we removed that from the general definition of an accessory dwelling unit and added that criteria into attached accessory dwelling units and detached. And so, I'm sorry, that must have just, in the transition of getting the draft and red lines over into that version, there must have just been a typo or that must have been missed.
That, that part is to be removed, is that what you're saying?
Some is and some's added, isn't it?
Yeah, something's.
Yeah, so, under accessory dwelling units, we're proposed, the proposed definition is a self-contained dwelling unit containing.
We don't have that addition.
We don't have that on our pa, on our, you should have a new version.
One I have matches what he has on this. I just refreshed and it comes right back to that same thing, so.
You do not see this one?
Nope.
It's 10B, 10B, not 10B-1.
No, 10B.
10B-1.
No, go to 10B. Not 10B-1. And that should match.
10B does strike out, but 10B-1 has it on, so.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Okay, I apologize about that.
No, that's fine, thank you.
So this is the alternative. It's just not struck out.
It's not struck out, okay. So, couple of the last changes were detached ADUs. And so, we kind of went through how that's defined, the unit that is detached from a primary, struck, from the primary dwelling. So some of the criteria, as we were meeting and talking about some of the concerns and planning commission, general intent of wanting to make a, make a, make a recommendations with, that it would allow for detached, we came up with the seven criteria to help mitigate some of the concerns. And so, the first one is that front, rear, and side yard setbacks must be the same as the primary dwelling unit. A detached ADU living area must contain no more than two bedrooms with total area that is less than 50% of the total square footage of the primary residence. But no more than 12,000 square feet. Three, the maximum height of a.
Did you say 12,000 or 12?
1200, excuse me. That would be quite a large structure. The third one would be the maximum height of a detached ADU must be two, or must be two stories and 25 feet. So this would be maximum height. The detached ADU shall have a minimum of 20 feet, but no more than 50-foot separation from the primary dwelling. The idea behind that was to allow for an ADU not to be built on the other side of the parcel. So that way, there could still be access, but not so close that it could potentially pose a danger if one structure caught on fire. The detached ADU shall share the same driveway as the primary dwelling. The detached ADU shall comply with ADU design standards in this section. And then, the detached ADU shall have addressing information posted on the ADU's primary entrance and at the entrance to the property to indicate that the structure contain, or structure contains an ADU. The concern is a lot of times, people will build out garages and add ADUs to them. And so, this was a way to help try to identify these units in case of emergency or accessing. And so, to finish out, there's just a few additional changes that we did to the design standards. Most of these had to be applied to attached ADUs or detached ADUs because of state code, excuse me, because the state code makes it very difficult for us to limit what the design standards for an internal ADU. And so, a couple of the things that we added is that attached ADUs must share a common wall and a roof of minimum of 20 linear feet within the primary dwelling and include an internal connection into a common living area of the primary dwelling or an administrative exception of less than 20 feet may be granted for the full width of a shared exterior wall elevation of an existing structure. That was added by the planning commission. Essentially, if you have two buildings together, there should be at least 20 feet that are connecting them internally. And that needs to be a common shared space. There is some concern by planning commission, you might end up with a home that has 15-feet width max that they have. And so, they wanted, and it wanted there to be an ability to provide an exception to that. We had to remove and change some of the architectural styles, some of those. And so, right now, so the architectural styles, building materials, roof lines, and building colors of an ADU must be compatible and consistent with the primary dwelling. So essentially, it has to look like the house. Entrances, an exterior entrance of an internal ADU or an attached ADU must be on the side or rear of the primary single-family dwelling. So if you pull up to a home, you know where the front door is. There's not two front doors right next to each other to avoid more of a, to avoid a duplex look or confusion with access. An ADU must include a primary entrance that is not accessed through a garage or a storage area. Secondary access into a garage or storage area is permitted. So they have to have a door outside, you can't just go through the garage to access it. And attached ADUs are limited in height to a maximum of two stories. For the purpose of this definition, building area in a square feet must be measured as the gross building area inclusive in the internal rooms, spaces, and exterior walls. And ADUs must be built on a permitted foundation, on a permanent foundation, excuse me. So a couple of the other items were just cleanup and just to clarify. And so, that permit and approval by the Bay River Health Department, Utah Division, Water Rights, County Development Services, Public Works, and Fire Departments with respect to sanitation, sewer drainage, and applicable health codes and requirements must also comply. We included the owner occupancy in another section. And then, the last item in here is for the purpose of future expansion and flexibility of uses, a homeowner may convert a smaller single-family dwelling into an ADU and build a larger primary single-family dwelling unit. This has been a request that we've received several times where somebody will have a small home and want to build an expansion on to that home and, but then keep that smaller home as an ADU so that they can rent it out in the future. And so, that's what this last item number six is to allow. And so, one thing we also provided in your packet is we also provided a ordinance that would remove the detached. And so, on this section, it just says not allowed detached ADU. ADUs that are detached from the primary dwelling unit or do not meet the criteria of an internal or attached ADU are prohibited. And so, essentially, because of some of the conversations that we've had internally, we wanted to provide an option for the council to do both. If you want to approve it, to allow for attached or detached ADUs, I feel like we have some decent standards that would help mitigate some of the concerns. However, as I mentioned before, staff's general recommendation at this time is to not allow for detached at this time until further review is done. So we wanted to provide an ordinance that had that as an option as well, or a version. Sorry, I know there was a lot of information. Are there any questions before the public hearing?
Well, we'd like to have a public hearing now. So with all that information, let's go ahead and then we'll come back, you know, after discussion there in a second. Let's go ahead and open up the public hearing to ordinance 2023-25. Is there any, anyone here that would like to speak for, against, or just speak? Go ahead, just state your name and accordingly.
Good evening, my name's Chris Keister. I'm a fairly new resident to Cache Valley. I live in the Westfields of Smithfield. After 24 years and plus years in the Air Force, moving around 14 different locations to include three foreign countries, I've lived lots of places in the world. Most of those locations allow for multiple living spaces in the same lot. A lot of times, those were built intentionally in the very beginning, such as Europe with multi-generational families. But full disclosure, I have a zoning request in for a, there is no ADU at the moment. But, full disclosure, I have a zoning request in for a, there is no ADU at the moment, so it is a guest house, does not have a kitchen. That is the difference between an ADU and a guest house. ADU has a kitchen, guest house does not. Kitchen is defined as a sink and a stove. That is the difference that I have been told by the zoning folks. Little bit of research, the National Low Income Housing Coalition states there's a shortage of 7.3 million affordable rental homes in the United States. An accessory dwelling unit case study done by the US Department of Housing and Urban Development looked at a county in Virginia that had much of the same statistics as Cache Valley. Was a little bit smaller, 60,000, 66,000 in 2000, Cache Valley was approaching 90,000. But it has had the same level of increase in housing, or in population in about the same time. In a six-year period, the median housing prices in that county increased 127%, while the median household income increased 21%, which I would say is pretty close to what Cache Valley has seen in the last 20 years as well. This county recognized three different types of accessory units, family dwellings, efficiency apartments, and tenant houses. Each of these types was approved by the zoning and permitting with inspectors, with a building permit provided the units met the zoning requirement. The community found that allowing the accessory units was advantageous in many ways, in addition to providing practical housing options for the elderly, disabled, empty nesters, and young workers. They are an inexpensive way for municipalities to increase their housing supply while also increasing their property tax base. The county adopted ADU ordinances to increase the housing supply within their growth boundaries. And in a 20-year period, a county of 66,000 people had 157 accessory dwelling units and 37 efficiency apartments. So there's not, and it was a 10-year period. So not a huge, huge amount, but definitely close to 200 additional places for families to live. They've already stated the Utah Code that states that the county has to establish some kind of ADU with an internal accessory dwelling unit. And I also looked up a couple counties that are kind of typical to Cache, Cache Valley. Weber County, Washington County, and Box Elder. They all currently have their ADUs. They have internal, attached, and detached. They have very little. This is the, Washington County is five pages worth of stuff to detail. Box Elder is three. Weber is just a little bit longer. But they all provide for provisions, they all state the 30-day limitation. I was at the zoning commission, and the reason they took that out was they did not want to put a limit on, we'll say, the Airbnb-type short-term rental in the zoning. They would much rather have had that in an ordinance passed by the county and the business license and things like that, rather than just have it in the zoning. So that was one reason that they had, they had taken that out. My reason for adding an ADU, my parents and my in-laws all live out of state. They are in their mid to upper 70s, and they are not going to be able to live by themselves forever. They do not live close to any other family. And so, in the very near future, I am looking to probably move them out here, and then rather than buying a separate house in the process of building a garage, and I was looking to put a small apartment, 300 square feet, with a bathroom, a bedroom, and a, and a living area. Mine did not include a stove, because they are probably not going to be able to use that anyways. They can come in the house and use the stove if that's something that they needed to do. But I was looking to do that to take care of my, take care of my, my family. And I would implore the, the council to look at that recommendation for the detached units. My small farmhouse does not have good attachment places to put an attached ADU of any kind of size or anything, and follow the setbacks, so.
Thank you.
Go ahead, thanks.
Any other? Did you want to, let's, yeah, we'll close it and you'll be part of that.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Move to second, we close the public hearing, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion passes.
Let's go ahead, Chief Hammer, could you go ahead and share your input on this?
Yeah, so as far as the internal ADU, we don't have any concerns there. It's a modification to an existing structure. We would fight a fire there, same way we do everything else. We are surprised occasionally when we find auxiliary apartments in, in residential structures. We'll, we'll evacuate the structure, we'll get in, we'll start fighting fire. And then somebody will say, hey, there's, there's another door back here, and we find it's a separate unit. But the recommendations they've made as far as addressing and entry into the structure, we'll address all that. With regards to the detached ADU, that's the one we're, we're struggling with a little bit. And, and principally because the fire service in the county is different than fire service in the cities. So the code that was presented said the detached would be within, no, no closer than 20 feet, but no more than 50 feet from the residential structure. The fire in Amalgas, that garage was 15 feet away from the house, and it burned the house down. We've, we've done controlled burns, demolishing houses, and I had, it was just a normal summer day. We're burning the house for some folks, and a house 100 feet away started smoking. So even at 100, 100 feet away, the radiant heat could start the fire. Now, that doesn't seem like, I mean, it seems like a problem, but you'll, you'll say, well, homes in, in cities are 20 feet apart with 10 feet of clearance on each side. And that's all good, but those, those cities have fire hydrants. And they can, they can really flow the water on that exposure, the house that's not on fire, while controlling the fire in the house that is on fire. We don't have that option. And when we're fighting fires in the county, we're typically relegated to about 500 gallons a minute based on the water tenders that we have. So our biggest, our first biggest issue is water supply. Our second is response time. It takes longer for the volunteers to come to the station, get to the scene, before they're able to start fire suppression. We're never really sure how many we're going to get. And so aggressive internal attack on a fire, on a structure on fire is delayed compared to cities. Access is the third issue. With some of these ADUs, they're gonna, and those pictures that I sent you last week, sometimes they're down lanes that are longer. Even the homes themselves are down lanes, and it takes, it's harder to drop water supply at the road and run a line down to the structure so that we can fight the fire there. And then in some cases, while we say in this code that's been presented, you'll use the same driveway as the main structure. What's going to happen when somebody comes in and says, I have a farm, and I have a lane going down to the hay barn, and I want to build the ADU off of that lane, because it's going to be a lot more convenient for whoever's going to live in the external ADU, or the detached ADU, versus having to take my existing driveway and alter it to get around the structure. We're going to have issues with access. Finally, the addressing and the design standard that they presented will help. Again, in those pictures that I sent you, we don't always know that a detached structure is, has somebody living in it. And the most, if you look at fire fatality reports, probably 99% of firefighter fatalities are in homes that are not occupied. So they go in searching for somebody because somebody might be there. We do a really good job at assessing the structure, looking to find out who's there. But we're not going to wildly send firefighters with the limited number that we have into a barn on the assumption that somebody might be living in a barn. So when we approach the structure, is it a barn, does it look like a barn? Two of those, three that I sent you, look like barns. One is a barn, but somebody's living on top of it. The third one, it looks like a garage. So when we approach that at 2:00 in the morning, we would assume that that's a garage, unless we have the signing and the design so that we know that it, it's a habit of dwelling. I think, in the course of things, we can address these issues. I don't think they're addressed in the code as has been presented. And I think if we, if we put the brakes, or pump the brakes a little bit on the detached ADU, go ahead and, and go forward with the attached. But give us a little bit more time to address the issues with the detached. I know Development Services is working with some other counties on some of the stuff they're doing. And I can say, you know, Box Elder has detached. They also have an ordinance that if the structure's more than 600 feet from a fire hydrant, then they're required to have sprinklers. I'm not recommending or requiring sprinklers, but as Development Services and as a billing official look at the use of that structure, is it a rental unit, is it a short-term rental unit, is it a family that's going to live there? That'll all affect the re- the sprinkler requirements in that structure. And I don't think we've gotten into the depth that we need to, to address those. So basically, we're for the attached ADU stuff that's been mentioned in the code. We would like to have more time to work through some of the details on the detached.
Thank you, any questions for Chief Hammer? Okay. We'll bring it back, we have some discussion here, go ahead and share freely. Or not.
I'd like that we're starting with the internal and the attached, we're going that way. The detached, not only were there concerns expressed by the fire department, but municipal services, when we look at our road manual, that has some issues that we have to address also on the detached. So I agree with what staff presented tonight, the internal and the attached. I'm ready to go that way and leave detached out for a while until we have more data and actually more information that makes it solid from the safety side of things and from also municipal services, so.
That, that mirrors my feelings as well.
I just have a clarification, though.
And then I'm also wanting to talk about the short-term rental time, so.
Here's my, here's my, just, this is just clarification. We were, we were sent the, the 10B, why don't that go down? 10B1 is the alternative ordinance without the detached, but it doesn't have all of the same detail as the 10, 10B1 does not contain all the detail about attached and internal that 10B does, right?
Right.
So, so like, we would have to pass 10B and just strike the, the part about the detached. We couldn't pass 10B1 because it doesn't have all the detail we need.
But as he was going through it, it mentioned not detached in somewhere, did it not?
Correct, so I apologize, I think we just had an issue with downloading the, the Google into, I'm not as, I haven't worked with Google Docs as much in the past. And so I think, I think there was just an error when we downloaded into a PDF form that the red lines got removed, and you kind of ended up with a wonky version of it. And so essentially, what we would propose is-
Yeah, which one are we going to vote on?
Is there a way I can use it?
Oh, sorry.
Throw it up there? So we've proposed the, essentially it's the exact same ordinance as the planning commission recommendation, other than for under 2C, it contains, it crosses out most of the language except for it states that not allowed detached ADUs. ADUs that are detached from the primary dwelling unit or do not meet the criteria of an internal or attached ADU are prohibited. And so that's the language that we feel like is part of this ordinance would be appropriate to move forward with if the county council feels like we'd want to keep detached units as prohibited. I do want to point out one thing that was brought up in the public comment, and I addressed a little bit in the report, is that currently, the county does allow for guest house. But what that is, it's a detached structure, it can be, it's a detached structure that allows for overnight occupancy, but it does not contain a kitchen. And so it, what we've seen in the past is that these guest house have been, we've permitted them. Essentially, it's a accessory structure with living space in it. But then after the fact, people will come in and bring in and put in a range or something like that. And I think that's a part of the confusion, the fire, knowing when or when not to respond to a different structure. So that's currently permitted in our code. And I think one thing I felt to mention when the planning commission, as we discussed this, I think they also felt like just allowing for detached ADUs would just allow for a clarity that we just would anticipate that some of these structures would be occupied instead of kind of having these guest houses that are occupied occasionally by guests. Who are, who knows, maybe you kick your teenager out into a guest house because you don't want to take him in your normal, in your primary dwelling. And so that is something that currently is allowed in our code.
So, I'm sitting here reading, do we have anything on here that says not detached except for 10B1?
Because I don't see it on my 10B, that the detached is not going right now, does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, that's what I was saying. It's like 10B is very-
So what we're seeing, Stephen, is what you've got, because I read right there, but where's that in here?
Yeah, I don't see that.
So, yeah, so this is, I, like I said, I apologize. I don't know exactly what happened in the version that got sent. But the version that's up in the screen is the one that we would propose. And an alternative to what the planning commission recommended.
Motion, are we saying 10B with what's on the screen?
I would suggest that we don't act on this at all until we have a clean copy.
I agree. And we need to talk about the short-term rental and what's going in there.
I agree.
So I think the one that was uploaded, was downloaded off of this version, but this, it removed the red lines, and so it's not a comprehensive ordinance. And so, like I said, the, the difference between them would just be this 10, or this 2C that's up on the screen, but, and it's up to, even though we do have a report that we need to issue, and in all honesty, if we don't have this ordinance passed by this, this week, that's perfectly fine. We'll just report that we've held the public hearing, and that it is in motion and likely soon be passed. And this, that should be fine with the state, they're normally okay to work with us as long as progress is being made. So if we want to continue it, and so we can upload the proper version, that's perfectly fine.
I definitely think that's what we need to do.
I would not recommend passing anything today without you having a clean version.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sitting here trying to look at the version I have and this, and I, I can't give you any legal advice on any of this, because I'm not sure what actually is being proposed to be passed.
Okay, so is it, it's okay then, we're going to actually move 2023-25 to the next meeting? So, that will be tabled as such. And then it'll be under pending action at that point, and we can discuss it and take care of things. And, but the problem is, if you make so many adjustments accordingly, will you have to have it renumbered?
Yes, so there might be, have to be some renumbering that'll take place.
Renumbering means that we have to have another public hearing?
So. No.
Okay, I want to make sure that we're not, you know, going to adjust something or we're talking two different things coming, that we're going to have to go through this whole process again.
Dane, correct me if I'm wrong, but the important thing is that what is published in the media packet as part of the agenda for the next meeting is what we are looking at.
Okay, so that'll come up accordingly.
That would need to be what you're looking at, to be your, your past ordinance.
Do we have any suggestions to give to Stephen tonight so that it could be more comprehensive? Was there specific things that we, like, like I, I feel like there needs to be some kind of a, I know that the permitting process happens, I don't necessarily think it needs a business license, but there needs to be some kind of follow-through, and I don't know how to do that.
Personally, what I would be looking at it is when it's, on that section that says not for short-term rental, the accessory dwelling unit, this is on page two, that we're, of the version we're looking at, a primary dwelling must be, must be rented for 30 consecutive days. I would like that back in, I don't want it for any kind of short-term rental.
Yes, please put that part back in.
I know that struck out on here, but I personally would say not.
Can I ask a question to Chief Hammer?
Oh, yeah. So when dispatch has it, can we make it so that if...
It's been permitted to have that, that dispatch knows that and can relay that to you? Is there any way that that would make a connection?
They can do it through addressing. So if it's 3D, one and a half, then that would indicate it's not the main structure, but it's an auxiliary.
That would seem to help.
And that's in the code? The address has to reflect that?
Okay.
And I was just going to go in and comment, I agree that we need to take, the whole purpose of this is to provide affordable housing. And to turn this into a way for a property owner to make money by renting out a short-term ADU for VRVO or whatever, whatever other purpose defeats the whole reason for doing these things. And so I would not be in favor of allowing short-term rentals.
Well, we really put competition on businesses who've gone through and licensed and doing stuff that we count on to bring people here that we get tax revenue from. We're not getting any tax revenue when we look at those short-term rentals and stuff, so.
Okay. Did I give you enough info, Steve?
Was there any other changes or recommendations that you have? Did you want us to look more into business licensing requirements or...
I don't necessarily think that's necessary, but...
It wouldn't be a business if you don't have the short term.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a business, but somehow, when the home, obviously, when the home is sold, that would be part of the deed restriction.
Okay.
But I just think there's no way to, like, if you built that house and then had a legal ADU, you're the property owner, but then you move away and rent the top floor to somebody else, there's really no follow-through on figuring that out, is there?
So like I said, the only options that are provided to us is we can record a deed restriction that we could require and make mandatory for anybody who has an ADU. And that's something that we could, it's not included in this version, but I know it was in a version that was considered at one point. But that's something that we could reconsider, and I could potentially provide some language if that's something you would like to see.
We could have it before.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can get that done this week and make sure it's uploaded in your packet for next time.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, then, that's how we'll plan that for the next meeting. How about, let's go ahead, ordinance 2023-26, amending 17.1. I guess you'll take care of that too, won't you, Stephen, or Tim, with whoever's in charge there? Go ahead and share the brief, brief comments.
Okay, I'll be quick.
I've heard that before.
So essentially, this was, this ordinance is brought, or there is a project that's wanted to be located just north of Pepperidge Farm. However, there was a couple of issues with their project with our code. They had some buildings that were too tall, it utilized too much of the property based on our code. There were some buildings within the rear setback, and they wanted to do an above-ground conveyance between the different properties. And so this is just some examples. This is what the site they wanted to do looked like. And so you can see from the site, they have some really big grain silos. You can see, let's see, you can see that there is a conveyance between here and Pepperidge Farm to deliver some flour. And you can also see they wanted to put some buildings right next to the railroad tracks, or some spurs, so that they can put some shelters over any cars that might be located there. And so when you look at this site, there's just, and you can see the site utilization is pretty comprehensive. They're utilizing a lot of the site with impervious surface, which currently, under our code, you're only allowed to do up to 50% of the site as for impervious surface. And so based on that, we went and looked, I'll get back to that. So we went through and looked at our code and worked with the applicant, or, and the property owner to come up with a code that would meet their needs for the site. And the Planning Commission made a recommendation to, for the code, to make these four main changes. So the first one would be to allow buildings to be 150 feet tall for agricultural processing facilities. Agricultural processing facilities was not defined in our code, so we added a definition for that. And then we also wanted to increase the setback for the taller buildings over 40 feet. And so part of that is to help protect site triangles in order for their site to work and based off the Planning Commission's recommendation, for every 10 feet in height over 40 feet, they'd have to, their setback would be an additional 1.5 feet back. And so this table was in the chart, but we also provided a couple of other tables to look at as well. Because as you can see, that as the building height goes up, that the front and rear side setbacks also go up proportionally based off that standard. One of the other items was allow up to 80% of the industrial lot to be covered in impervious surfaces. This is actually a problem that we have had in a few other sites where they will build out structures that'll cover around 50% of the site, but then they'll be forced to do gravel instead of asphalt in order to get around this standard. And so we felt like allowing up to 80% of the industrial lot to be covered in impervious surface, so that would allow building asphalt, concrete, those type of, those type of improvements would be allowed. Our current code requires that 10% of the area be dedicated for landscaping. And then there's also stormwater requirements that will also have some capping effect on that, because essentially, the more impervious surface you have, the larger stormwater basin that you have to provide. So the next one was to allow for site and rear setbacks to be zero feet when adjacent to an active railway. This will allow for buildings to interact with any spurs off the railroad, off the railway, so if they want to bring cars into some shelter, that would allow them for that. And then the next one would be to allow for above-ground conveyances between properties. The things that we required is that it's at a 25-foot max height limit and that a cross-access agreement should be required as part of that. So both property owners have agreed to allow for that type of facility to be built. So we went through and, there's, it's hard to find an example that was quite like theirs, but we have provided a couple, there are two examples I'd like to look at. So this is the facility in Brigham City. This is off Forest Street, kind of across from the pool, if you're familiar with that area. So the silos are 80 feet tall, and the building in the back is 120 feet. And as you can see, the 80-foot silos are located about 100 feet back. The front ones that are probably about 40 feet are about 30 feet back. And then I'm not exactly sure the measurement of the taller building in the back is probably an additional 20 feet or so, though. The next one is this one in Logan City. This is right by the high school. We were not able to find the height of this building, but these are set back about 10 feet off the public right-of-way. And so we'll get into this, I can, I'll pull up the ordinance, but the conclusion is Planning Commission gave a positive recommendation for the proposed ordinance. One thing I would like the county council to consider is as we're reviewing this ordinance, it's important to think of the site and potential economic development and agricultural use that this could provide. However, any change in our zoning code would be, would apply across all the, every industrial zone. So we allow it for this one site, we allow it for all sites, as long as they can meet the standards that are passed. And so we can pull up the ordinance and I can review it. Hopefully, this uploaded correctly.
Do you have any idea how many industrial zones are in the unincorporated county?
It's not a lot, but we can pull that map up real quick. So it's everything in purple, which there are some up by Richmond, which is the main site that we're talking about. And then, Tim, do you know any other big industrial sites we have in the county? I know that's our large, that's one of our larger ones. There's some out in Hiram. Whoa, I zoomed in a little bit too much.
Just an area north of the airport recommended for future consideration of industrial in the general plan.
Yes. But as you can tell by our mapping, there's not a whole lot of purple on this map. So, and compared to other uses, it's not a significant amount for area. But there are, there are use, there are industrial lots and uses within the county. Like, there's some out.
I don't quite have that far.
Here north of Mendon.
Can you find, zooming in on that? What is that on the west side?
This one?
I'm just curious where that's located.
Yeah, what is that?
You know what's out there, Tim? I honestly don't know. Of 300 north, or 3,000 north.
Oh, okay, I'm familiar with rural. Just wondered why that one isn't, it's an island to itself.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't know.
It doesn't look like a business is on it.
There's nothing there now.
Hemp production.
Yeah, we can look into that a little bit, but as you can see, we have a few locations adjacent to cities. We, our general plan proposes some north of the airport.
Okay, let's kind of go over here.
Okay. And then, so the first thing that we added was agricultural processing facilities. So we define it as a building, facility, area, open or enclosed to any location for refinement, treatment, or conversion of agricultural products where a physical, chemical, or similar change of an agricultural product occurs. Examples of agricultural, examples include, but are not limited to, fruit dehydrators, grain silos, cold storage, housing, hauling operations, and sorting, cleaning, and packing, packing and storing of agricultural products. One thing that we did exempt from this was like secondary uses, like kitchens. So if you're combining agricultural products and making food, agricultural byproducts, making food, that wouldn't, that wouldn't count. So we're really looking at raw agricultural products. So as we go through here, so this is within our development standards, under 171040, so site development. And most of these changes take place in our use, in our standard table, our development standards. So we've added a note to side yard and rear yard in note five and six, and then added a note for maximum structure height. And then we changed the maximum lot coverage to 80%. So note four is the maximum height, processing facility. So this is for agricultural processing facilities specific to the production of food in industrial zone, mean districts to be 150 feet. And then we get into the setbacks that we talked about. And then five is the side or rear setback for industrial and commercial is zero feet when adjacent to an active railway. And number six is above-ground conveyance of manufactured products are good through piping or other means is allowed between adjoining parcels zoned as commercial or industrial at a maximum of 25 feet. Cross-access agreements are required between parcels. And so it's a little bit smaller. I know the proponent of this is here, and they may have a, probably have a comment.
Okay, let's go ahead and we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone would like to speak, just take two or three minutes per person and state your name, if you'd like to speak in favor, against, or whatever it may be.
My name's Ed Kevorek. I'm with the Bratney Company. As it be the builder of the facility for Utah Flower Mills. Our business is building industrial processing, ag-based flower mills, feed mills, that sort of thing, all over the country. This property was rezoned into industrial for the purpose of building a flower mill to supply flour to Pepperidge Farms from local grain supply. So rather than trucking flour in from Ogden, Salt Lake, Blackfoot, make the flour right here next to the plant. To build a mill with the capacity to supply Pepperidge with the amount of flour it needs, this is what it looks like. You know, it's, we need X number of days of grain storage, we need an efficient way to get it in and out of that grain storage through the mill. We are fighting very hard to consolidate our layout as much as possible and meet the setback requirements, but we're just bumping up against the edges. If there's anything specific in those code changes that people are curious about as to the why, I'd be happy to address any of those questions.
I have a question about the railroad spur. Is it privately owned? Like, that's not, that doesn't have anything to do with the actual railroad company, right?
The UP's main line runs adjacent to the property. We're bringing a spur off onto, well, this is, this is actually under discussion right now with UP, if we have to get completely off of UP's property, which would push us even further east on the property, or if we can have rail-associated operations, so receiving of grain and shipping of flour, still on their 100-foot right-of-way.
Okay. So you wouldn't, so you're hoping not to have to get their, being, their approval for what you're doing with that?
Oh, no, we have to go through UP's approval as well. Absolutely.
That's what I wondered.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other, anyone else that would like to come up and speak?
We'll close the public hearing.
Second. Moving second, we close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's open for discussion on this.
Just the first question I had and one that maybe Stephen can help with, or some, just my concern with the increasing the amount of impervious surface is the stormwater. You mentioned that's, you know, can be addressed, but forgive myself being not familiar with it, I can't picture how that would be accomplished on this project. Is, are we far enough along that we understand and know roughly what that would look like?
They haven't made any official proposal to us yet, so we haven't reviewed. But anytime an industrial site is built, they're required to manage their stormwater on-site according to our standards. And so that does have some limitations. So, I mean, I have seen people do underground stormwater facilities in really tight areas. However, typically, those are more expensive, and so the county, most of the time, what we'd see is some sort of stormwater pond or detention area.
But there's...
If they're 80%.
That's my concern, is that with the 80% used for impervious surfaces, the only option is underground, right?
It's just an up to 80%. So they don't have to do 80%. They could do less.
Yeah, I'm talking in the max.
We're, we are passing an ordinance that applies everywhere. And I don't think we should be, we're not in the position of being able to approve or disapprove an ordinance based on some specific project. And so if we, if we pass the ordinance, then they are required to simply meet the provisions of the ordinance in order to move ahead, and so, you know.
Yeah, understood. That's my question. Do we feel like the water, stormwater requirements in our code can accommodate what would need to be considered if we change this zoning?
Well, they wouldn't be approved to do it unless it would.
Provided that's...
Right. I understood that.
It does depend partly...
Before we change the ordinance, we've got to know we can handle it.
I believe so. It does depend partly on the site, because the soil compensa, our soil compensation can change. So if you have a bunch of clay, then obviously you're going to need a bigger pond because it won't, it won't soak through the soil, but you'll solve the evaporation, where if you have more gravel, then it'll soak in a lot quicker. And so some of it is site-dependent. So there might be some sites that they would like to do 80%, but their storm, the storm pond area could potentially limit them. But there would be other sites that could get away with much smaller storm, stormwater facilities. But I believe our code is adequate to address that.
Okay. That's the answer. Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, thank you. Let's go on to pending action, ordinance 2023-22, 8479 rezoned. Brought up last time, any...
Well, I would make a motion that we approve ordinance 2023-22, 8479 rezoned.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of second. Any other discussion on that? Go ahead.
I will make a motion for ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-two that we deny this. As we discussed it before, this. Are you two so far from municipality boundaries and everything else and the issues along eighty-nine, ninety-one? There's still some things to see, so. Planning commission approved it, but. I'm not quite there yet, so my motion is to deny.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moving second, that we deny ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-two, eight, four, seven, nine rezone. Any discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor of the denial, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and any opposed?
Nay.
One nay, the rest are aye. Okay, so it is denied. Initial proposals, let's go with ten A, annex, Hardman annexation petition. Actually, would it be okay if we jumped down to twenty, let's see, ten C? To accommodate some of the, of the members that are in the body if we want to, do we want to move on any of that?
I thought they were having fun being here. Having sat through planning and zoning and having listened to these folks, I think it's a good thing for the county and for the agricultural. I think it will help some of the farmers place their grain locally. It also helps, I think they mentioned some more employment that would be coming to the county as well, so. I will make a motion that on ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six.
I believe we probably have to waive the rules.
I'll waive them. Waive the rules, so.
On this particular one, so go ahead.
Yes. I'll start over.
Sorry.
I'll waive the rules on ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six, amending seventeen point ten, and my motion is to approve it.
I'll second that.
Moving second, that we waive the rules on ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six and approve with the amending of seventeen point one. Is there any discussion? I will, will take a privy to that. It's one thing I am very much against. And I've always been, it's really tough to create ordinances for specific things. I worry about that. I think this is a great idea. I think it is extremely workable. I think it is, it's amazing project and that, but I, it's always hard for me to just wrap around that we swallow entire ordinances so that we can make sure that something works. But it isn't really anything, in looking at everything, it isn't anything that causes me heartburn whatsoever. But I just don't want a project to. But actually, you know what? There's a lot of ordinances we have that are usually the result of someone coming asking questions anyway. So, but anyway, that's how I feel. But any other discussion?
My main concern on the stormwater thing is, as long as the plan isn't, well, we'll dump it in the canal and they deal with it. That's.
Well, and that's illegal.
I know, but we have a lot of instances where that happens.
But I have, I have also seen.
As long as we're adequate, which I'm.
Yeah.
We, staff believes we are.
All good points. I agree. And I'm hoping that when the planning and zoning discussion is industrial zone, we got some opportunities to look at that. That's why I asked for how many.
That's all probably part of permitting, which that they'll, they have to take care of as such. I'm sure they've looked into it already in order to get permits, so. Any other discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor of ordinance twenty twenty-three of waiving the rules and passing ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, now let's go back if we can to the Hardman annexation petition. And will you share some of that information with us?
You're not staying to have fun, huh?
Would you mind switching over to? For me?
Thanks.
Yes.
So Mr. Hardman is looking for an preliminary agree, consent from county council. He hasn't filed any annexation petitions at this time. However, his properties are highlighted in the red. The purple, pink is Mendon. And so part of his property, as you can see, is currently in Mendon City. And he would like to annex the rest of his property into Mendon. However, the annexation itself would create a peninsula, which is, which you can't do under state law unless the county council agrees to allow that to happen. So a couple of things that we'd want to consider in creating a peninsula is whether it'll affect our services or roadways, which this time it doesn't. The only roadway they have access off of is UDOT Road, Highway twenty-three in front. And how it'll impact other property owners. After review from the planning department, we haven't found that there would be negative impact for allowing this to go forward. And so with the county giving indication or agreeing to allow the creation of the peninsula. As Hardman is planning to file for an, or filing an annexation petition with Mendon City and the county.
What's the frontage that he has to Highway twenty-three?
It's, let's see.
Or not?
Yeah, it's not a lot.
Is that the only access to the property right now?
Yes, this is the only access, which is part of the reason why he wants to annex into Mendon so that he could build a home on it. So it's eighty-five feet.
That explains.
Have we? I mean, if he's annexed into Mendon and he's talking to the county, who notifies existing landowners that they have some say or consideration on this?
So he has to file the petition with Mendon City and then Mendon City goes a certain procedure they have to go through to make sure property owners are notified.
So there they'd have a voice. I just want to make sure they have a voice on this.
Yes, so I'd have to review. It's been a while since I've dealt with the annexation. But if they're doing a zoning as part of it, typically there is a zoning notification that goes out with the annexation petition that meets their own standard, whatever that mailing distance is. But then every property owner that's affected by the annexation has to be notified. However, that doesn't necessarily mean that every adjacent property owner is notified of the annexation under state law.
Well, that's a weird description. Every property owner that's affected by the annexation is all those who are bordering that, so.
Yes, typically how state law includes is everybody within the annexation petition area.
But there's no limit or description.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if Mendon, cities can opt to notify adjacent property owners, and I don't know if that's something that Mendon City has chosen to do.
Let's put it this way, if I was sitting there next to this, I'd like to be notified.
Yeah. Yeah.
Also, I have a question. The, the zoning, obviously the part of his property that's within Mendon City is, I'm assuming is zoned differently than the rest of the property. If they annex it, then does the city of Mendon dictate how that is?
Correct.
Zoned as they bring it in?
Yep.
Either have a default zone or it would be specified.
Yeah, most cities have a default zone that.
Like right after.
Yeah, so exactly. So most cities have a default zone, but oftentimes you can file for a zoning, a certain zoning as part of the annexation process. And then Mendon City would decide, they would first vote on the annexation petition and then they would vote on the zone.
Okay.
And if they do that, they have to follow their own internal, their own procedures.
Well, with that, that all said and done, any more discussion, any questions? I'd entertain a motion. Which we would need, that we have basically just in agreement. It's really not for an ordinance or anything.
Saying we don't know of any reason to say no at this.
Yeah, it's basically that we are not, not agreeing or disagreeing, but we will not stand in their way either.
Do we need to make a motion for that?
I would.
I would, do we have to waive the rules?
No.
Okay.
I don't think we do on the initial, on the annexation.
There's no action necessarily being taken by the body at this point. It's just a, basically a nod of the head.
Yeah. Everyone feel okay about this?
Yep, I do.
Yeah.
We'll go ahead and let this go through.
I abstain because I, I'm concerned that adjacent landowners haven't had talk to or anything else like that. I mean, we consider it might happen, but I'd just like to know that, but.
Well, let's call them.
I think that's, that should be part of that process anyway.
I agree.
Okay, we'll let, go ahead and let it proceed accordingly. Okay, let's go ahead and we are, as far as the ordinance on ten B, we will be dealing with that next time. Let's go back if we can and approval of budget committee plan. On those two budget committee plans, I'll entertain a motion or any discussion you'd like to talk about, either one of them, on what you'd like to do there.
I just had another question. I, I just want to make sure, and I apologize for my questions. I didn't see this proposal before the meeting. I'm just wondering, Alma, maybe you could answer a couple of questions. One of my concerns is, is that this might narrow the county's options as far as programs that might be able to be supported. I know specifically there's one nonprofit that we've discussed supporting the Veterans Center. If we made this change, do we, do we know that they would qualify for this particular narrowed scope?
Based on the information that we received in their application before. It may be difficult. It's not impossible. Because they were kind of getting started at that point when the pandemic hit. And so to show if we're going to look at just financials, that might be difficult to, to show financials.
So are you saying that making this change could make it more difficult for us to help the Veterans Center?
I.
Possible.
Is possible.
Didn't you say though that to use the ARPA funds at all? It requires whomever is using it, whether it's the county or nonprofits or anybody else, to demonstrate that the pandemic affected their, their revenues and their operations.
Right, but.
So irregardless of whether we do, do it under this narrower band of management or leave it wide open, either way, don't, wouldn't they have to indicate that in some way they have been, I mean, whether, whether it's veterans, whether it's. Anybody else, they would have to show that, that they have been affected that way. And the funds would have to be used to help their loss of income during the pandemic.
Right, and.
You know, they can't use it for capital purposes and things like that. Is that right?
Well, to go back to the, the overview of the final rule. It says, under impacted nonprofits, recipients can identify nonprofits impacted by the pandemic and measures to respond in many ways. For example, recipients could consider decreased revenue, namely from donations and fees, financial insecurity, increased costs, uncompensated increases in service need, a capacity to weather financial hardship, challenges covering payroll, rent, or mortgage, and other operating costs. But I guess the, the question might be is, you know, if you're just looking at solely to recoup lost revenue, or would you look at some of these other things as well?
I guess my question was directed that way because of, somebody approached me about applying for these funds to be able to expand their operation, their nonprofit operation. And it doesn't sound like the funds are available to be used that way.
No, but if we, the way this is written, it, does it include all of those things you just listed? You listed several things besides loss of revenue. Are we excluding some of those other things? Like, are we only narrowing it down to loss of revenue and excluding all the other things that were on that list?
That's my concern.
That's.
Sounds like we're doing it.
Yeah, so.
That's a clarification we need.
Does it say in that, in that publication that, that if you, that there is a difference between how those are reported or?
No.
So you, so we wouldn't have to limit it to just lost revenue? If, if we're trying to avoid having the county have to do all of the, the reporting. There's still some of those other things that we could add in here that would preclude reporting. That's correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that, because that, that's kind of where I think, I think the budget committee who worked so hard on this, I think that was one of their biggest concerns, was the liability of the reporting afterwards. But if we can expand it even more than just lost revenue for these nonprofits and still not have it be a big accounting problem or something that's a liability, that, I think that's kind of where, that's how I would like it to be. I think that's kind of. We don't, we don't want to narrow it so far down, but we do want to preclude the reporting requirements. We want to keep it in that vein.
So in shorter form, we could say both options are allowed. Right?
Yeah.
Or applying for ARPA or the restrictions that are in there because there, there was one where the county is tasked to monitor and one where they're not tasked. So if we say we let the nonprofits fall under both and we still limit the amount. Doesn't say we have to use it all. I don't think, well, I don't know. Do we have to use all hundred, five hundred and fifteen and just for nonprofits?
No, we just have, we, that's a, a limit that we would stipulate as a council. We could.
Yeah, that's what the amendment says.
But we have to use all the.
Set aside for it. It doesn't have to be consumed for it, but then we'd have to pass another policy to say what we do with that excess.
I'm sure there'll be.
Which is fine.
Alma, that, that separate section, is there a way that this policy could be changed to reflect all of those potential scenarios? Or is there, in the rule, is there some kind of a summary or a title for that section?
It, it's just impacted nonprofits and it just kind of bullet items.
Yeah, I'd like to list all those items in the.
Under the, under the six B dash one, you're, you're wanting to add all those bullet items to where it says all ARP awards to nonprofits shall be solely to recoup lost revenue. You're wanting to actually replace that with those bullet items, right?
Yes.
I agree with that.
Yeah, that makes me feel a lot more comfortable. I, I just, my, my concern is that, that would have tied your hands in, in who you could award this to. And I think adding these gives you more flexibility.
Yeah, my understanding was this was the only avenue that didn't require the extra reporting. But if, but if we can add in all those other impacts, not just solely lost revenue, then I'm so much more comfortable with that.
Good, thanks Alma. That was my question.
Any other questions that would? Is there a motion to change that then?
I would make a motion to add in the bullet points from that publication into the section for the nonprofits receiving ARPA funds. All the rest of the restrictions, the application dates and all of that are, I think, I think that's.
Is there a second?
A second.
Moving second, we add those bullet points, which have been stated by Alma there, to six B dash one, alternative ARPA funds plan. Is there any discussion on adding those bullet points? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor of adding those bullet points, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, they have been added. Now it is open for discussion on, you can either pick one of those plans, pass one, or pass this plan as amended, or whatever you would like to do.
I would make a motion that we pass six B dash one as amended.
Is there a second?
A second.
Moving second, we pass six B dash one, alternative ARPA plans, or funds plan as amended. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. That'll be the one that's accepted then.
Mr.
I don't want to accept two plans at once, so we won't even, we'll say the other one's dead right now then.
Amy did remind me as to six A. I need to ask for a, a vote of whether the council's approving that position before I can spend any of the, the ARPA funds. I don't want to start ordering vehicles and things until I, I know that the position's actually approved. So if the council's not ready to approve that, that's, that's fine. I just wanted to clarify for Amy.
How do you feel about the, on the new position for special investigator? We will see. We will see the budget portion of that for the twenty twenty-four year, but so that the, so that our attorney's office can get moving on that.
I make a motion that we approve the new position.
Aye, aye, second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
You bet. So, okay. With that in mind, I believe that's it, except for let's go down to sauerkraut days. Anyone interested in that?
I would like to, but I'm out of town that day.
I love sauerkraut.
I would be there.
Yeah, I'll be there too.
I can't be there on that particular day.
I can't even. Oh, wait, no, I can't.
That's a Thursday, remember?
Sorry, sorry.
And I'll, I'll be there as well.
I'm out of town.
Okay. Okay, if so, add the names there. USAC Fall Conference, any more additions to that one?
I am pretty close to saying yes. Just got one more thing to check, so.
Yeah, can you put me down for yes? Yeah, I got confirmation this afternoon that I can take it.
And it is a drive down there, so if you do need lodging for the sixth.
I believe it's, you, you want to keep that extra night.
Yeah, so that would be a pretty good drive. It's doable, though.
Yeah, you could drive down on the seventh, but.
Yeah, but then you sleep too late.
Okay, if you have, if you haven't looked at the treasurer's June concili, reconciliation report, please do so. It's for your information. Councilmember reports, Carl.
Nothing tonight.
I wanted to mention that I, a personal, one of my neighbors is Brian Steed, who was recently named as the commissioner of the Great Salt Lake. He has some fabulous information about the water, the, the whole Colorado River Basin and kind of where we're at. If the council would be interested in having him come present, we'd say he'd be happy to come, answer questions, and just make sure that we're informed as we make policy for water in the county. So that's just a suggestion that I would thought I'd make.
It'd be interesting to hear, but I think the county's going to be forced into a water policy.
I think possibly, but he'll be a big part of it, so it'd be good to communicate with him, if we could.
The sooner the better, because that's coming at us.
Is that something maybe in a joint workshop with, again, with our water district or something, or?
Yeah, whatever.
And maybe he's already been.
Maybe he's already spoken.
Well, we have a new engineer. It'd be nice to bring him aboard and have us meet him, Skylar. So maybe we could invite that, and he'd hear what Steve's going to present. It would be good.
Let's see if, like, could we dig into that and see if maybe the, possibly maybe the second meeting of August or something like that, or?
And with the water district.
Uh, yeah, that would be great. See if members of them could come, because if we could all hear it together, it'd be great, so. Thank you. Oh, Sandy, any other? Okay, Mark?
Nothing really to report, other than the library board did meet last week, and we discussed the board's view of the, rough view of master plan, and so there's some questions that I'll be formulating and then maybe circulate an email to this group for just some, you know, kind of show us the guide ropes for what may be acceptable future outlooks, but nothing really to present yet.
Thank you. Barbara?
I just want to recognize our sheriff's department and all the deputies and everybody that's there, and thank Dane and Nate for all their work that they do. I had the opportunity to go down to that surveillance, what do you call it?
The simulator.
Simulator.
Did you have to shoot a gun?
I did. And I.
After you got to.
I got to, is right. I loved it, as a matter of fact. But I, I don't think we give every one of these people enough recognition for what they do. So I appreciate all of that. They make a lot of instant decisions that could impact them and their lives and their families to protect our county, and I appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you. Noel?
Not much, but I will put out a kudos to the development department. I have met with them quite a few times lately. They've probably sick of me, but I appreciate them listening and letting me come in and voice. And I would invite that, as Mr. Erickson and I met with them today on some things, that maybe they keep us as a council in tune on some of the things we've asked to, for them to look at, that citizens have asked us about, some agricultural things and that. So thank you. I know you guys take a lot of heat, but appreciate your help. So, thanks. So I have.
I have just a couple of questions. One is progress on the drainage district appointments?
Executive?
I think Mike's working on those.
That's what we need to talk about, Dave.
Okay. Want to make sure that that's still moving forward. And then I, one thing I would like to actually, if we could, make sure that, I understand, are we looking into a new finance program?
Software?
Yeah.
We can give you an update on that at the next meeting.
Could we please postpone all that until all these investigations are complete? That's all I would be asking at this point. I don't think we should be changing that until all of the investigations are complete, so.
I would agree, because we actually gave some money to finance to improve or update. So I don't want to be throwing money if we're going to update or go new, so.
I have one extra thing. Start thinking about a summer party for the county council. I know we'll probably look, probably towards September is that where we've looked at. So I'm open to any ideas that anyone has.
I do have one more thing, too.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Go ahead.
Barbara, we thought we could go over to your house for a shrimp boil.
Okay, you're welcome to it.
This is a question for Dane. Do we know if we've got anybody ready for the board of adjustment that's sitting, or where we stand on that?
I am not sure if we've had it. I'm not sure where that process is. I will check with Taylor tomorrow and, and see where we are in that process.
Okay, so we're updated on that. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions, other input? Hearing none, then.